All right, I'm officially calling to order the September 17th, 2019 meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee. So, welcome all. Business meetings, we're gonna start a public comment. I just want to remind everyone, if anyone's got anything to say, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Just trying to keep it to two minutes a person, and not speaking more than, was it twice on the same subject? And if you would introduce yourself and where you're from, to be helpful. If there is any public comment?
I actually brought an example, a book.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry. You just said what you get. Miriam Bradford, so close. Old Essex Road in Manchester. Anything else with that?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, sorry. I brought a book to pass around. This is a book that my son made with me this summer, because he has a lot of anxiety about school. And he started fifth grade this year. And I want you to see the page specifically where he talks about the responsibilities that he's going to have, and how it's going to be a little bit more challenging, and there will still be homeworks and tests and reading. Mom and dad and your teachers and specialists all know it'll, you'll rise to the occasion and become a late learner, and some of the cool things we'll learn to do this year, or share your ideas, et cetera, et cetera. And then in fifth grade, there's all these great things that you get to do, including go to Maravista and do the school musical. And I know that my son is not the only one who has been looking forward to this for the past six years, so. Thank you.
He made that. I put it in a program, but he made that.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else while we take a look? Okay.
There's people outside.
Okay. Your meeting. We'll come back to them at the end. We're gonna move ahead. I don't have a lot on the chairman's report, except I was given an invitation from the woman who runs the, Lisa Smith from Cape Ann Video, I'm sorry.
Lisa.
Lisa, what is sixteen twenty-three? Sixteen twenty-three Studio, sorry, I can never get that right. It's a Cape Ann Climate Crisis Action Meeting, taking place on Wednesday, September 25th, Rose Baker Senior Center in Gloucester. And she would love it if somebody from the school committee would come. There are selectmen coming from various towns on Cape Ann. I believe Greg Fetterspiel is going. So it's just to talk about kind of where we are, and where to plan as a community, because I think that's a conversation that's happening a lot. So I'm gonna forward this to all of you guys.
When is it?
Twenty-fifth. Rose Baker Senior Center, six to nine.
Six to nine, yeah.
And I have this, I will send it to you in email form. I just haven't gotten a chance to. So I can't make it if somebody else can, and I can pass this around, so you guys can see what's what. Pass it back this way. And that was all I had for chairman's report. Consent agenda.
Question to approve?
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, I just had one quick thing to say about consent agenda, so I can remember mine. On the draft for the goals.
Oh, are those part of that? I thought they were separate. They're under continued business?
Yes, they are under continued business, sorry, you're right. Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
I don't know.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Subcommittee?
We had a building committee meeting last week. The project is moving along, and I guarantee they're right on schedule, and maybe a little bit ahead of schedule, but you don't wanna really just say. Yeah, yeah, I know, I said it. But things are going great over there. Some of the cool things that Pam filled us in, as well as the project team, Kathy Pnoyer, is they're trying to work the project into the curriculum. And the project team's a little bit excited, it's not a little bit, they're pretty excited about it, because most districts talk about it, that they want to do that, it never comes to fruition. But Kathy Pnoyer has really taken it under her watch to work into the curriculum. And they've met with the project team, they're gonna even work it up into the middle high school, and maybe have photography department go over, you know, they're gonna do like industrial kind of pictures, whatever. So that's actually doing with it. And they want to meet with the school committee, the community, a couple of times a year, and talk about how the, you know, what's being impacted over at the building. We saw a cute, a cool video of a drone shot, which they're going to post.
Oh, awesome.
They're trying to figure out how to extract it from the program, so we can put it up online. So you can see a bird's eye view from how, and they're just finishing up the foundation, I believe.
So that's a drone shot that belongs to W.T. Rich?
W.T. Rich did it, yes.
Awesome.
He just needs to figure out how to upload it. And we are... Award, this first steel delivery comes October 28th, which is, I think, a big, big deal.
Wow.
That's a pretty exciting event. And right now, we're awarding the packages in the beginning of October. The bids are due on October 1st. Then they'll start awarding the packages for masonry, roofing, roofing on the 8th. Anything else that's exciting?
Hundred percent construction docks went today. We're on time and on budget so far, so we are going to like take that win and run with it.
And if we pressed him, maybe just a little.
We're just gonna say on time and on budget.
I have heard, I don't remember if it's during our tour, that once the steel starts to go up, it goes really quickly. That part of it just goes super quick. All right, no comment.
Well, this time next year, we'll be in in a month. Almost a month.
We will have been in for a month?
Almost, yeah, yeah. So, think about it that way, that's fast.
Okay.
Exciting.
All right, is that it, you guys? Finance Subcommittee, so we haven't had any meetings, but we are working on quite a few. September 27th, we're staying with that? The budget collaboration?
Yes.
I just saw your last one.
Sorry, yep, sorry.
September 27th, October 25th, and November 22nd is when we're looking at our budget collaboration meetings. And it looks like we're gonna, you know, pretty decent attendance. You know, sometimes we get a couple stragglers that can't make it here or there. But then we will start in earnest with all of the budget discussions.
Is that eight thirty?
Yes, I believe they're all eight thirty, right?
We're targeting eight thirty, if they, if there's a couple people who've had some scheduling issue with eight else, we can always push it back to eight.
I love eight, but.
It's fine, we made.
We'll just, I put it out there, I'm gonna wait and see what I get from people.
Okay. Trying to shut this down. All right, policy. Eric and Rachel?
We're not.
Have you got them? Okay. All right, well, welcome to the policy committee. Negotiation team, Sarah and Ken.
We've got nothing yet.
All right.
Only tangential thing I have is that I met with the co-presidents and they are, they have a draft, the final contract document, and we're hoping to wrap that up and have it posted into the DESE by end of September.
Can I have a copy of that?
Yes, so as soon as I get it, I express that we'd like to be able to go through it, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Before it becomes official. But they are working to get that complete.
Into the D E S E?
Yeah, when we have a new contract, we have to submit it to the Department of Education.
Oh, okay, so, but the initials are?
D E S E.
Thank you.
DESI.
Elementary, secondary education.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Use it all, a lot of jargon.
We know our jargon by this point. All right. Pam, do you wanna take it away from the superintendent's report?
Sure. Just a quick update on, well, first, I'll go with what is or was up on the screen, which is, very positive thing is the launch of any of our community partner, who has been working to create some community, a community resource center for everything, from mental health to vaping, support services for the community and students. So they launched their resource site this week, and our goal is to try to grow this organization slowly but surely into something similar to a tri-town council, or a Danvers Cares, if you're familiar with either of those organizations. Essentially, it's a community organization that's aligned with both the towns and the schools around some core values. So we're having discussions now about next steps around identifying not just school core values, but community core values and assets. I would say this is a multi-year project, so it's not gonna be a super fast endeavor, but this is their first attempt to reach out to the community and let you know that they are there, and that there's a lot of resources that you may not be aware of for you, both your children, for your parents, or for you yourself. I think their next big event that's coming up is Minding Your Mind, which they're cosponsoring with support from the Spalding Ed Fund, which is a student and community presentation on mental health, and mental health awareness. And that's coming up in November. You'll start to see those obnoxious emails that keep coming in, telling you about the parent ed series, and what's coming up, and that's one of our highlights. Jumping off of that and going backwards, in October, we'll have two evenings, one on October 24th, timely with the events of last week. We have our annual roundtable on safety and crisis preparedness at the middle high school. It focuses mostly on the middle high school, all are welcome to join. You'll learn there about our process for preparing for crisis events. We're happy to report that there really wasn't a crisis last Friday, it was really just the rumor of a crisis. But you'll learn how we coordinate our efforts with the town, both town police departments, and what we do throughout the year to be prepared should an unfortunate event come our way. We're also building into that night a component on vaping. We know that is a very important topic to many people right now. So I believe Officer Locke from Manchester will be doing a presentation on vaping as well. And then earlier in October, I wanna say it's the 8th, but don't quote me on that, we have Dr. Englander returning to, again, timely with last week's issue, talk about social media, managing social media, cyberbullying, and bullying in general in schools. She's from the Mass Aggression Reduction Center. She's considered to be one of the top experts in the region on these matters, and I think it'll be really helpful to hear from her again on how we can be better managing our lives on social media. So I'll touch on that very briefly, just to clarify any lingering questions. Last Friday, there was a rumor of a threat that a student was going to bring a gun to the high school. And it was just that, a rumor, there was no threat ever actually made. It's a bit of a modern version of the old-fashioned game of telephone, where somebody thought they heard something, repeated it to someone else, and then it kind of went from there. And a student posted on social media what they thought they heard. What we're hoping, what we're gonna try to communicate to students is, before you post, let somebody know. That's a more helpful way to help solve the problem. But we're thankful to the parent who did see it, reported it to Essex Police, and then both departments worked together to get to the bottom of that really quickly. It probably didn't seem quickly if you were watching it all explode on social media, but they worked pretty quickly and had the whole thing wrapped up by about midnight that night. One thing that's difficult is we won't communicate until we have something concrete to communicate, because we don't want to add to the speculation. So at 10 o'clock, we went with our best information at that time. By midnight, the entire thing was resolved. So by the time that the morning came, we were able to put out a little bit more of a detailed bulletin that essentially said there was really nothing ever to be concerned with. But again, my many thanks to the staff and students at the middle high school. They handled it fantastically in the morning. The admin team and the police department, the police chiefs worked through the night, and they did just a great job, a great team effort. So we were happy that resolved in a very positive way. That is about it since our last meeting.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
About the ME Hub. I mean, I was gonna say, it's a community effort that isn't just a district thing, and I really wanna thank publicly Michelle Kamski and Mrs. Warnock, I'll show you. Yes, for spearheading that in both towns, for helping fund it.
Yeah.
Here, here.
Thank you.
It is a, if any of you have a chance to take a look at it, it is a fantastic website. Incredibly intuitive, tons of information, really easily accessible, so take a look at it. It's ME Hub. And the website, I think we have a link on our district page?
Yep, if you go.
Oh, crap, sorry.
If you go right to the main page there, logo is the top, quick link.
And it's not just about the webpage, that's one aspect of it, but there's gonna be further outreach and community work, so.
It's for the community at large.
Yep. It's not just for, yeah, it's a regional effort.
This has been a year in the making.
Yeah.
And it's terrific. So, yes, thank you, Lynn and Michelle.
We're hoping it's just our feedback is welcomed, not from me.
Great. New business, I don't think we have any continued business. We would like to welcome Chris Bevelacqua from Ipswitch Y.
How do you wanna do this?
You can just jump right on the computer, it's wide open.
Okay. The lights have a little bit.
While Chris is setting up, I'll just say that Chris is from the Ipswitch Y, and while ME Hub is one of our community partners, the Ipswitch Y has become a tremendous community partner to us, providing a lot of after-school and enrichment opportunities at Essex Elementary. They're working now in conjunction with EYC. EYC hadn't been up and running when Chris came to us with proposal to take on some of after-school, some of the after-school work, so it has just seemed to grow year in and year out with the expansion of programming, offering summer opportunities in literacy, and I'm gonna let him tell his story, but we really value the work that they do. They've just created a lot of opportunities for our kids, and worked with us on everything from providing things to do on release days, when we change the kindergarten schedule to start right at the beginning of the year. They've worked with us to kind of amend and provide some childcare opportunities there, their swimming program. But I'm sure he will do a better job.
He's also been really smart, he's been helping with ME Hub, has also been great about working with private sector in trying to get resources for that summer program. So Ira Goodepsco, who's a partner with us, and I don't want him to leave, so. He's been such a great resource for us, and I think it's just the beginning of what we can do.
I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody. This will come up at some point, so I just, we've been working with the school district. Pam's been a great partner, as she said, and we've been able to do some great things in the community. And I just wanted to take some time to share it with the school committee, just to kind of let you all know kind of some of the impact of some of these programs. You know, at the core of what we do, or why we're a community service organization, so we look for the needs in the community, and then we try and service those needs. So with partnership from the town of Essex, our service area is Ipswitch, Essex and Rowley. I became executive director about four years ago, and one of the things that was really important to myself and our team was to try and expand our reach into Essex and make sure that we support that community as well as the other ones we serve. We didn't have a lot of outreach, so we've worked really hard to do that, and this is just some of the impact we've had. So the first program, oh, there you go. So we had, we have a summer literacy support program. So as I mentioned, this started a couple years ago, under the grant from Ebsco. What we were hearing was that elementary school kids, rising second and third graders, there were a fair amount struggling with literacy, especially with summer learning loss being a big thing, being a big issue. They were looking for, schools were looking for resources for this. So we met with Pam, we had been doing this in Beverly. We had Ebsco, who's interested in supporting it, and I said, hey, we'd love to be able to try and offer this in the community. We started the first year with a two-week pilot. This is for rising second and third graders, and it is free. So we started off with the two-week pilot, that grew this past year to a four-week. This program provides academic support in the morning. So the morning portion of the day happens here at the school, it's taught by teachers, licensed teachers. We hire them to do the literacy support part of the curriculum. And then in the afternoon, we put them on the bus and we take them over to camp doors, so they have a traditional day camp experience in the afternoon as well. Kids love it. In the second year, we grew from two to four weeks in length. Participation jumped from 15 to 21. The second year, we started to see more Manchester families get involved, which is great, and take advantage of it. Again, the, this, some of the results, so in 2019, on average, we were able to use some pre and post testing this past year. So participants entered, entering at a reading level of, you know, grade three with five months. They left with an increase up to grade three in eight months, over four weeks. It's a small timeframe, but we were able to see some kind of improvement. And then overall, the students started with a 1.7 G E A, increased to a 2.7 reading level, which again, for the first grader, that's a big jump, for the one who's at one year and seven. What's that?
What did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, grade equivalent, sorry, grade equivalent, I'm sorry. And then overall, overall increase in oral fluency, we saw maybe like a 5% increase in the kids that participated. So being able to read orally and read to the kids. It's a great program, it's a lot of fun to watch the kids improve, it's a lot of fun to see them participate. So, you know, thanks for having us, and we hope to continue with this moving forward and grow it to a very larger program, thanks to Ebsco, our donor. So it's been a fun one to do with the school. The second one is the after-school program at Essex Elementary. We got some inquiry about need for an after-school program. Again, talked with Pam, talked with some of the residents, and we're able to start the Essex Elementary After-School Program. On-site after-school care for Essex Elementary students. It's a licensed program, we're licensed by the Department of Early Education Care, so we have standards that we need to follow and adhere to to maintain our license. That license also allows us to provide voucher support for families that are in need. In addition to that, we, as a Y, part of our mission is to support through financial assistance, so we have financial assistance available for families that maybe are not eligible for vouchers, but still have some need and need support for their kids. Participation's grown every year, current registration, we're at about 31 students. Our busiest day is Wednesdays with about 24 kids. We have offerings from, you can go for two days a week up to five days a week. Half-day care and then vacation care as well for working parents. To ensure, as I mentioned, that everyone, to ensure that everyone can participate, we have financial assistance, we have vouchers, about 12% of our participation use that aid. And, yeah, this is one that continues to grow. The school's been fantastic, the elementary school principal has been fantastic to work with, everyone's been really welcoming. We've had the opportunity to bring in some outside agencies to provide STEM and STEAM activities, so we've had Audubon come in and do an eight-week program on sustainability and environmental awareness with their kids, so able to tie in and bring in some stuff that maybe they either aligns with what they're doing in school, or kind of just beefs up the regular programming that we have. Middle school theater program, so we've been doing this here for a while. We provide theater programs for grades six to eight. Productions include Elf Jr., Aladdin Jr., all the juniors. Productions appear, happen in fall and spring. Casts are made up of about 40, 80 students per production. I'm not, this is year four, maybe, that we've been doing this? So we had a number of students come through. It's been great to be able to offer a performing arts program to the sixth and eighth graders, the sixth through eighth graders. So that's been a lot of fun. Just some pictures, which are kind of blurry, probably, but up in the top left are, it's our reading program, or some literacy program, some pictures of the kids out at camp, after-school, and some of the theater. So next steps, we're looking to expand summer literacy support program to six weeks for summer of 2020, engage more Manchester families. There's a big push with literacy, I think, throughout the school year this upcoming year, so hopefully we're gonna work closely with Julie Rowley to align on this, and make sure that what we deliver in the summer aligns with what's happening in the school year and supports it. Continue to work with Essex Elementary to grow that program. Again, yeah, we started at 14, we're at the 31. Hopefully, that program will continue to grow within that community. Partner with the Essex Youth Commission to offer enrichment programs for Essex youth. We've started to work with them to make sure that we can help them offer what programs they have ready for, or that they want to bring in for Essex youth. Provide, work with them to provide space, staffing, whatever we can do. Participate in the ME Hub Support Network, again, great, 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 great opportunity for us to be a resource within Essex through this outlet and Manchester. And then finally, just continue to partner NERSD to offer programs and support to students. So wherever we can, we jump in. Again, Pam and I try and meet pretty regularly, and she's pretty great about letting us know where we can jump in and help out. So thank you to all of you for having us in your school and letting us be a part of your community, we really appreciate it. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out or ask them now.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
You have done some amazing things.
Go ahead.
So the two towns are having regional conversations, and I wonder if, are you, has anyone talked, I think you and I talked about Brendan talking to you about regional efforts. You know, the two towns have been talking about how we can share resources and find efficiencies, and I wonder if you've been looped into that conversation, or that's something we need to do.
I would not be.
Because you're doing it, but we haven't really talked about it at that regionalization.
Yeah, we haven't been looping into it at this point?
No, no, so when we met with you a while ago, there were, there were student services, but there are also a lot of family services that you guys offer.
Yes.
That we have not necessarily availed ourselves of. And so I think that that's just something that the two towns should be aware of, because we have limited resources in our town halls to address some of the challenges that families face. And so I just think that, you know, awareness of all the programming that you offer is just a boon to the two towns in terms of.
And can Manchester participate in that? I mean, I know when.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If you participate in what?
In a program to not have.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, a thousand percent.
So do you tie in with like Manchester Parks and Rec, or is that the better one?
So, we haven't tied into them, they're their own establishment, and they do a really great job with their programming, and seem to meet the needs of Manchester, so we have focused mainland Essex, just because that's where the requests have come from. And they, again, they're great to partner with, Brendan's a rookie, the town manager. I think, you know, lets the selectmen know what we have going on, and what we have available. So, and we're happy to be part of any conversations that come up and support wherever we can.
I just think it's a good idea to just have that conversation in, just with Brendan, Greg, and Chris, and you, because I think that you kind of have an awareness of what the Y is offering and what possibilities are.
Well, I think there are resources available, and you know, we're gonna see that through ME Hub. That might not be available in Manchester, so, you know.
The more people know about what's available, I think it can only help. Right, and you know well the Beverly Y, and you know those folks, and you collaborate with them, so it's not like.
Yeah, we're all, we're all one association, so why the North Shore is Ipswitch, Beverly, Plastow, Havrell, Salem, Marblehead. So we all, we're all under one umbrella. So if there are any services that, you know, folks see at the Beverly Y, where they're thinking, oh wow, that could be, you know, that's something that we can take advantage of, absolutely let myself know, let the executive director there know where I was looking for latest support in the communities around us.
Isn't the Gloucester Y coming on behind the scenes?
Gloucester Y is, we're getting there, finishing up the fundraising, groundbreaking. Yeah, we, I think we've got a little bit more left to raise, we've raised most of it, but that should be hopefully within a year, but construction deadlines, who knows, but, yeah.
We don't know.
I know, we're gonna do our best.
Is there a date? Are they targeting a date? Because I see, you know, trucks up there, and they're all very busy.
Yes, they, yeah, they would like to, they would like to be ready for September of next year, but I don't, I don't know if that's.
Another question. What physical resource, how many different Y's, things are part of the Y's?
So we've got seven branches, so ranging from Plastow all the way down to Marblehead. If you are a member at one of those branches, you're a member at all of those branches, so you receive all the services and benefits of all of those branches. Camp properties, we have two. Beverly has one, Havrell has one, Salem has one. Marblehead actually owns an island, that they run their camp on, which is pretty cool. So, yeah, so I think those are all the camp resources and properties. And the camp properties, for the most part, will run just in the summer seasons. We try to do programming on the shoulder seasons. A couple of them will do year-round programming on, but the majority of our programming are year-round happens on the main facilities and main campuses.
But if you?
No?
Anyone else?
Anything else? All right, thank you so much, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, no worries.
Are we going too fast? All right, so moving on.
Were you all talking fast?
So moving on, we are gonna talk about what I think everybody has come to talk about. The Field Trip Task Force. So Pam, I'm gonna let you frame this topic.
Okay. Well, last we spoke about Maravista and the grade five field trip committee, and overnight field trips in general, we were touching base at our retreat this summer, just to see what our next steps would be. Our last formal meeting was last night, where the task force came. They provided us kind of an overview of the work that they'd done, and talked a little bit about next steps. And next steps was to investigate, you know, just further discuss sustainability of staffing, complete the cost of the program, the liability issues, taking a look at some other districts, and then consideration of alternatives. And I feel like when I went back through their presentation, it kind of ended at a stalemate, if I could. If I could be so blunt in that there were a couple of different routes we could go down, but we weren't really ready to make a decision at that point, so we had recommended further study. So I think the good faith intent this year was to continue with the further study, but we, I put it on the agenda for tonight because we've just been presented with some real-world issues that are speeding up our decision about the overnight component of it. So in speaking with the principals and some staff members, we likely do not have enough staffing to run the fifth grade trip this year. We've had several movements among grade levels from long-term participants. We have two leaves, which will leave us without additional teachers, and we won't have enough male teachers to be able to staff the trip. While that was going on, I was also getting a lot of feedback from the eighth-grade team, the middle school principal, about their ongoing concerns about staffing, the eighth-grade trip, the liability of the eighth-grade trip, and just the, in both camps, the overall disruption to the school year and the school week when they're gone. So I get the fun job of kind of being at the middle and taking in all the inputs. People have been great in reaching out. It is very clear that the community likes the trip. Much like when we talked about debate and needing to change how we do things there, it's just not sustainable in its current format. And if you boil down everything in their reporting and in their discussion, essentially, the piece that makes it unsustainable is the overnight out-of-state multi-night travel. I think that's where the heart of our liability concerns and our accessibility concerns lie as well. So kind of taking in current information, knowing that we have to put deposits down, it will not be feasible for us to do overnight trips this year. Now, a lot goes, a lot of questions come out of that determination. There's a commitment from both the middle school and the elementary schools to continue with a, what they're calling kind of a senior week for grade eight and grade five that tries to capture the spirit and the intent. I think the intent and spirit, as it's told to me for eighth grade, is a curriculum enhancement and extension, and at grade five, it's the coming together of two schools to create a pre-sixth grade bonding experience. So I think what we're, what the charge of the committee needs to be this year is to go forward and redesign those weeks of culminating activities for the fifth and eighth grade, but to discontinue the overnight component.
So the idea is that this is, originally, we had hoped to have this conversation over the course of this year with the determination on Maravista in 2021. Unfortunately, if I hear you correctly, we've got a lot of staffing concerns, a lot of liability concerns in all of this, which is different from last year.
Sure.
And the fact we have to put down a deposit on Maravista makes this conversation happen now.
Right, we can't guarantee that it can take place.
Right.
So I would rather deal with disappointing people, for those who'll be disappointed. And I think there's an entire group of people who will be relieved. And I think there are people, you know, on both sides of the issue. But I'd rather deal with the issue now than at the eleventh hour when we think we can make it, we may make it, we may not make it, and people have done a lot of effort, and then you're disappointing people.
Right, trying to Band-Aid something together.
I kind of been thinking about it this week. It's a little bit like a snow call. There won't be an answer that's satisfactory to all, and everybody's going to look at it from a slightly different lens of whether or not it's feasible, but the information we have right now, it's not feasible for this year.
Okay. And can I just finish? So that begs the question of the eighth-grade trip as well.
The same thing. I've received written correspondence from the eighth-grade team, same concerns.
No longer feasible.
Yeah, and I mean, they're citing things that I think are reasonable. We have lots of staff members with young families. You're looking at childcare issues, being away from home for several nights, concern about personal liability. I mean, it kind of runs the gamut. I think everyone would, everyone has given their all to making this work. It's my job to recognize when people are being stretched beyond what they can reasonably do, and we're at that point.
It's a lift.
When we surveyed other districts, and we did a quick, you know, we did a survey last year of school districts, we got a sample of about fifty-two districts. Seventy percent of the districts do not participate in these trips. Those who don't, about sixteen of them recently changed over, all citing the same things that were in that report. Accessibility for all students, inability to staff it appropriately because of staff, you know, the staff that started the trips aren't the same staff now, so there's not as much participation. Nursing was the other piece, which is aside from the staff that, you know, we need to travel with nurses. That's a very difficult role to fill. So all of the same reasonings that we came up with locally, other districts have already been there. So we're not alone in not offering the overnight component, and I think, you know, great minds can work together to kind of recreate the spirit.
So when we talk about what we want for Maravista in the spring, what we want are all of the positives. We want the bonding, we want the off-site, you know, kind of getting out of Dodge for the week. But the overnight lift for the staff is just, has gotten too much. So I think what we take away from it is that we would like to preserve all the positives. And I think that we can charge the teams to figure out what, how to recreate that because we've got a lot of resources here in this area.
I wish Chris had stayed because between, you know, if we want to make it feel like it's away, there's even, there's their Girl Scout camp up in Raleigh, which is not like going to Chabaco, which kids do all the time. There's everything from Thompson Island to Boston. I think we are rich with opportunities in the region that can be kind of put into the context of the day.
We can replicate those things that we're looking for without having to have the eight-hour out straight.
The project adventure component, the team building adventures.
Yeah. So with that, I want to open it up to school committee. If, yeah, if there are any comments. Ken?
So just one question in terms of understanding what you're referring to on, who owns decisions around this and all that? Forgive me, I appreciate you putting forward, Frank, at the task force that I was on or Rachel was on last year, as school committee representatives and to a lesser extent, parents. We heard a lot of the concerns about sustainability, a lot of the concerns that the staff voiced around liability, and the fact that this is essentially almost like a seventy-two-plus-hour round-the-clock coverage required for it. My one thing is, is how it ties into school committee is that we, this is part of the curriculum that we say fifth and eighth grade have an overnight trip? Or is that even, I'm just trying to find that and just understand.
It's kind of at the, it's at the cross of several different things, but not clearly in any one thing. Because I was thinking about that today, I'm like, what does the final decision look like? And I think the final decision ends operationally, because in theory, an out-of-state overnight field trip needs to be proposed every year and brought to school committee for approval. For, you know, to make sure we're following all the rules of travel. So that part, the approval of it falls with you. The proposal of it has not happened annually for some time, so it's kind of, the factor become part of the program.
Yeah.
But then as part of the program, that's why it's opened to so many pieces of liability and accessibility and guarantees that every student can participate and some of the, kind of the concerns we're running into. So is it really part of the program? Yes and no? So it's part program and then part policy.
Yeah.
But then the big piece of it is operational, because if we don't have, if, I can't guarantee that we have enough of the appropriate staff to travel safe, then I wouldn't be bringing the recommendation forward anyway. So as with a lot of our decisions, I think I could easily say operational, I'm saying we're not going, but I think if getting everybody as close to being on the same page as possible is helpful. I think the one thing we could be, I could be faulted for, I would fault myself, is that this has been kind of, we've seen this coming for a while now, and we brought it, began bringing it forward last year. We probably started, should have started three years ago. But I think, like many people here, there's pros and cons to the event, and it's a tradition, and I think that was recognized, so there was every effort to try and maintain tradition. But somebody said to us today, just because we've always done something, isn't necessarily the right reason to keep doing it. Said completely in a different context than this, and I just, I think that's where we are now. So I wouldn't be doing my job if I weren't to say that it has become too much of a difficult lift for us to guarantee that we can continue this program going forward. So I think we should make the difficult decision to stop this year.
Just, I'm sorry, just, I want to, one thing that we did spend time on in the discussions, and I'm going to, is you mentioned that the format is overnight, out-of-state, multi-night. One of the things that we did do as part of the task force was enumerate all the benefits. And I, immediately after the fifth and eighth grade, I was traveling with someone with families that were on both. One of his daughters in the eighth grade, and it was like, whoa, the benefits are all there. One of the things that we kind of kept coming back to is seemed to be, do we change off of this format and this tradition? And we kept going down, oh, yeah, there's ways we can change off it, but we kept coming back to, are we ready to make that switch? And it sounds like you aren't saying, operationally, there is nothing. You're saying, there is the, in that format, in that context, we can't continue, but alternatives are possible.
Right, we want to keep the concept of the culminating event at the end of fifth and eighth grade. Everyone agrees multi-day.
Yeah.
So redesign a multi-day, locally or regionally-based set of activities that still capture and create the same outcome. And I know there will be, some people will feel that we cannot, the overnight component brings something that we aren't going to be able to re-capture. Understood, but that's also something that's fit beyond the scope of the district to provide at this point.
And it wasn't just overnight, the fact that it's at least three nights overnight for both.
Charlie?
So this is more of a question for all of us. I do think this is something that has to change. My concern is that it's something that we all thought was going, you would have a conversation over the course of the year. So I think kind of, we always say that we want to do the best things for the kids. Now, if you were coming to us and saying that we can't financially, we just don't have the money, that we just don't have the money, or if we're saying we don't have teacher, we have no teachers that will go. So my only concern is, you know, you've got these kids that are in, the school year's already started. They think they're going for both, the fifth and eighth grade. So there's just a part of me that's just kind of saying, or thinking, can we just get, do this one, one more year and?
No, but we won't.
Excuse me, I'm not, I'm talking here. So that's my concern, that we're, that we're just going to be hurting the kids that think that they're doing it. And I do agree that it was a heavy lift for the teachers, and it has to change.
So can I respond to that? So I've had four kids go through this district, and I will tell you that every year with both of these trips, there have been issues with fundraising, with getting parents to help volunteer, with the burden on teachers to try to organize and herd cats. There have been kids with severe anxiety who've had a hard time doing overnights and their parents, and it's like an entire year of anxiety about our, my, I don't know if my kid's going to be able to do this, I'm going to have to go with the school, the school's trying to manage that, they're trying to manage kids who have challenges, and it is a huge lift for the staff. And I acknowledge that because I know, I know what it took. And I think what we need to think about is, what's the problem we're trying, not the problem, but what's, what are we trying to get? We're trying to get for fifth graders, for them to learn how, who each other are, and I don't think that necessarily has to happen at the end of the year. I think it should be happening throughout the year. And what for eighth grade, is it about government or is it about something else? To me, the eighth-grade trip always seemed to be this, not a boondoggle, but it was, you know, this very, very long trip down, exhausting few days of just hitting a bunch of museums and then a trip back. But what was the curriculum focus? When Ian was a kid, I think Eric Gordon came in and had to change the trip. Essex moved from doing their own thing to doing Maravista. So we had change, and it was hard. People didn't like it. But, but you know what? It was about, he was focused on what is the goal we're trying to reach here, and the change actually worked. So.
I'm agreeing about the change.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm just saying, like, right now.
Yeah.
And I don't want to just throw something together at the end of the year to say, hey, we did it.
I don't think we should throw something together. I think we should work on something.
But it's, we're in the year, and there's so much going on.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, there's a part of me that's saying, can we just do, and I'm, oh, the eighth-grade trip is not nearly as impressive to me as having a kid who's gone through both, and the fifth-grade trip, who had struggle going.
Yeah.
And she did it. She'll kill me for saying that.
On camera.
Yeah.
Sorry, Charlie.
So, I don't know. So that's just what I'm saying, to rip, to do it right now, just.
I don't think, well, I don't think we can do it.
Someone else talk. Principals are telling me we're not going to be able to staff it.
Yeah, so if we can't do it, I'd rather her tell us this now.
Oh, absolutely.
And manage expectations.
If we have no one to go, then there's nothing, there's nothing to vote, there's nothing to say.
Right.
I mean, we're down a certain number of staff members for eligibility to go.
So Ken and I were on the subcommittee together. Can you explain, Pam, exactly? I know that in our discussion, because I'm, I want to have a clear understanding of what happened with the staffing. I know that we, there are two fifth-grade teachers at Memorial that are now teaching second. Is that, is that, okay, so.
And we have two additional people who we rely on to go, who are on leave of.
So one's on a leave of absence.
Two leave of absences.
Two leave of absences, okay. So that's.
With all of those changes, we have only one eligible male teacher to go.
For, for fifth, the fifth-grade trip or for both?
For Memorial.
Okay, so, okay. So that's what has changed since the spring.
That's been a major change since the spring.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm just trying to get clear on where we left off and where we are now. The other, I mean, there were basically, you know, five points, the sustainability of staffing, the cost picture, understanding of liability, comparing with other districts, and consideration of alternatives. We talked recently about the cost picture. We have never seen a cost picture, either as a subcommittee or here, and I'm wondering if we can get that.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Because I know that when we first started the subcommittee, cost was the big issue, and obviously, staffing has moved to the fore. So I'm just trying to get a clear understanding.
Yeah.
Of what that is. Because we were going to talk about that.
This is dying, I'm flittering out. So the cost to the district, the cost, I think, in actual dollars should, district is actually not, I mean, it's money. It's about twelve thousand dollars between stipends, subs, and nurses for Maravista, and ten thousand for DC with the total camp tour, like, the total rental of Maravista being thirty thousand, and then transportation at five-three. Now, we have less of a lens on the total cost of the picture for DC because parents pay for direct. So I think the indirect cost that we haven't been able to calculate is the cost of time and money, the cost of time over the course of the year to prepare students and families to go. Because while many families find this to be exhilarating, and kids are looking forward to it for several years, we have families who start their planning on this in the second grade because of, because of their anxiety or however. Everyone's family is different, and everyone's readiness for this is different, I guess is the best way that I can put it. And some see it as a great positive, and some see it as a very frightening prospect. And there's a different path for every child to get there. We have no evidence, I mean, that's what the task force was looking to do, to see if there was any tangible evidence that, you know, forcing the child that doesn't necessarily want to go on the trip, antecdotally, some kids have a great experience after all of that, and some, they feel the same way about it after as they do going in. I mean, we've met with parents on both ends of the spectrum, so we know that that's a real thing. And we have a contingent of students who, we spend a long time throughout the year meeting regularly with the parent and the student and working on the plan to attend. So that we don't have a number on because of people's hours, but it's a lot of time and energy.
But is the cost question now secondary to the fact we can't staff it? There is no one to.
We need high-qualified staff to do it, and I'm here to advocate for my staff that they have been troopers, they have been incredibly supportive, and they are reaching the point where they can no longer manage it on a personal level, and I have to recognize that and bring that forward.
I think that's very important.
It's well beyond the scope of their job to spend.
A family cost. I mean, I'm, you know, I had a kid going to Maravista and to DC a couple of times. It's very expensive, and so, I mean, those costs keep increasing every year, and I wonder if there's different ways that we can look at skinning this cap? Like, what, what are some alternative programs that have the same educational value but are less onerous?
I think when we make the, when we finalize where we're at and get on to the planning, we will be blown away by the number of opportunities. And if we look just at our community partners, Product Adventures in our own backyard, they're they're a new partner, they are more than willing to help us pull together programming. Middle school's already started moving to having an outing there every year as a team of activity.
So as we talk about alternatives, who's talking about alternatives? Whose responsibility is that going to be?
So at this point, I'd like to charge the task force, those who are willing to continue, those who may like to come back on, to continue with their work there and pull together a similar task force for the eighth grade for redesign.
Okay.
And, and part of the reality is that the eighth grade discussion, of course, happened on the back of the fifth grade discussion. Because as we were raising the issues and talking about our concerns, it just, the conversation continued and they wanted to make sure that I was aware that they have equal challenges. And Joanne's been a great advocate for them as well. So I, we have a tremendous staff who, if pushed, will always give us their all. It's my responsibility to advocate for the kids, for the parents, for the teachers. And this is kind of, it's right in the middle. And we're gonna, we're gonna have to look forward and find a solution to try to, to recapture the spirit.
And our staff will, sorry Sarah, I would say, our staff, they are extraordinary, will make it special. I mean, I think they, when some of them...
I think they have been pushing the last several years to get this done and it, it kind of...
Um, I just wanted to say that I know that it's really hard to let go of a tradition and I know that a lot of people are feeling very upset about that. But I think that when one door closes, often another door opens. And I think that we're gonna come out of this with some really amazing adventures for the fifth grade and the eighth grade. And I'm also really hoping that maybe part of what can come out of this, and I've talked to Pam about this before, is that maybe we can start having some of those partnerships earlier, like before fifth grade. And I'd really love to see every grade, every year, have some activity where all of the children get together as a grade.
It's a great idea.
So, I'm, I'm just looking forward to seeing what creative ideas come out of that.
Great. I agree with that.
Okay, so next steps. There are a lot more people that have arrived since we opened this up for public discussion earlier, so I'm going to open it up again with the understanding that everybody be very respectful, respectful of the process, respectful of the people who unfortunately have to make very unpopular decisions. But also understand that this kind of doesn't happen in a vacuum. You know, this has been a conversation that's been going on for a while and unfortunately it's come to a head for operational reasons. So I would ask you, if you would like to speak, please stand up, introduce yourself, tell us where you're from. Please don't speak on the same subject more than twice for two minutes. So with that, I will open it up. Anyone? Euler? Miriam, you've already gone.
I have a question.
Can, can we let somebody else go?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We'll get back to you in the end.
Hi, I'm Ally DeAndrea and I live in Manchester. And I have a fifth and eighth grader actually this year. But my question would be, if we do reformat this, like especially for Maravista, where is that money going to come from? Because I've, I was fifth grade chair one year and we, we have our play and we spend all year raising that money. I guess the question would be, what are we going to do with that money? And are we going to be, as parents, tasked to pay for whatever plan has come up with? Like, are we really going to save money as parents?
I think it depends on what the task force comes up with and what the alternatives are. We can't put a price on it now if we don't know what it is.
Right.
Um, off the top of my head, I would say that the fifth grade, fifth grade play will still go because there needs to be probably some element of fundraising for whatever these alternatives are. You sound, you look like you...
Yeah, that was the first thing that John said, make sure they know the fifth grade play is not going anywhere, whether it's a fundraising event or not a fundraising event. This fifth grade play is staying and the talent show I don't think is used necessarily for fundraising, but those, it's not going to touch those components. I think what the goal is, is to work quickly to get a ballpark number so that people know what they're fundraising for. I, I would imagine we could probably do it for less than forty thousand dollars if we're not taking the expense of overnight accommodations and travel as far as we've gone, but I'm not an expert.
Yeah, because I think the bottom line is about four hundred dollars a kid for Maravista between your bus and your, depending on what's increased each year. But it seems as though we'd easily spend that kind of money as parents on a few days of, some sort of team building thing. And you'd still face a lot of the same problems. You'd still, I mean, you have a financial thing, you still, the staff has to go off site, so you need your nurse to go with you.
But I don't think you're asking your nurse to go for, and your staff to go for four days.
Right.
That's the difference. It's already part of their workday.
Right.
So these things would happen within the framework of the work, the workday. So I don't think those demands would be onerous.
But would there be an option maybe to, as, in our fundraising, could we maybe also raise money to pay for the staff to come? Whether it be hiring a nurse to come, I know the police often come with us, whether we could use some of that fundraising money to make the trip happen, I guess?
There was...
And you still could have the same anxiety of children going to a project adventure and ropes courses and...
Agreed. There was discussion, quite a bit of discussion on how overnight adds to a lot of the anxiety and logistics because of the twenty-four seven. There was a joke from some of the most, from some of the most, the people that advocated had the most out of the program, it was like, oh, those who managed to sleep through the first night don't sleep through the second night. So the joke among the teachers was a, oh, you're up for the first forty-eight hours anyway. At the same time, there was, I just have to express because it hit me, having done Cub Scout overnights, I'm responsible for these, for the students in my care and at the same time, I'm in a state of personal exhaustion myself just going. So staffing definitely, everybody feels stretched and is concerned on that.
Ally, I don't think it's a question of paying people to go. I don't think there is a well of people who desire to go, no matter how much you pay them. I mean, I think, I think that's the issue. I think the staff has been stretched to the point where, no more. You know, they've done it, and they've done it, and they've done it.
I'm sure there's a lot of parents that would happily volunteer to go that don't want to send their kid on their own.
Yeah, then I think that's a whole different issue that we, we can't even entertain.
Well, we did also talk about that there are some groups that have done extended days where it isn't just the workday, but, okay, let's do one day that's longer included campfire component or something. So we deliberately stayed away from alternatives just because we didn't want to spend weeks wandering around there, at least at the stage we're at.
Yeah, that was going to be a separate subcommittee.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Ally, I've got you in the corner of my eye.
Hi, Ally Savery, I'm the...
Can you stand up so we can catch you on camera?
Oh, yeah, Ally Savery, I have several kids at Memorial. One of whom is in fifth grade and, and I was curious how you anticipate this news being told to the children and then, I don't know, because I anticipate, I mean, things are going to trickle around, but I feel like it could be helpful to have a discussion.
Well, we'll, school-based communications will move through the principals and teachers. So everyone's anxious for us to have had this meeting, to have some clarity. Everybody, regardless of what your position is, just kind of just wants to know where this is going. So I'll meet with them on Thursday morning and anticipate that they'll be in touch with their school communities probably by the end of the week.
Somebody back there. Hi, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Sack, I live in Manchester. And a couple of questions. One, did the alternative look of just going over, just going overnight for one or two nights, was that examined? And then the cost differential of that? And I think one of the things that, you know, I understand that the staffing doesn't, is lacking this year and could be going forward, but, you know, we did hire a nurse and a policeman this year. And how much difference was that? And if you had to hire two more people, what would be the price differential divided by a hundred students? And if the fifth grade and each grade after that was willing to take on an extra thirty dollars per child, would that change your view at all?
Well, I think if you're hiring people, part of the appeal is your teachers are going, that your kids have a relationship with and they're, so if we're all of a sudden outsourcing all of the people that are going, to me...
It defeats the purpose.
It, it, it defeats the purpose of the whole program, that's just my initial...
Well, there is like a new fifth grade teacher this year, like, you know what I mean? The fifth grade is changing too, as in a staffing component. So does that change then? If those staffing are not necessarily all the people that have ever gone every other year, did that open it up to different staff going?
If we pull staff, and this is kind of where we're at, which is kind of somewhat accounted for cost, if we pull, like, we pulled people from the middle school before to have male representation, which means then you're leaving the middle school without teachers and you're hiring subs to cover classes at the middle school. When we went through, we saw we have teachers from different grade levels going, which means we're bringing in a sub and not having a second grade class for a week. So the cost is not necessarily the ten thousand dollars for stipends, that's kind of baked into our budget. So whether it's used for some type of planning compensation or compens, you know, money to go to some of the outings that are planned, the cost is on the disruption to the school and trying to make up for other people who are pulled to go. And we are outsourcing a lot of the work. And then some people can't have, I mean, there'll be some profiles of students where we're absolutely required to have a certain level of certification and care, and we can't outsource that. And I think that's what we're, we're running into with nursing, which is nursing, we're paying top dollar because we can't get nurses to go on these trips. You're asking people to travel for four days with people, you know, with a strange group of people to provide a service. So we've been lucky to pull parents in some instances, but that's not always the case. So we'll, we could be up against it the week before trying to find somebody to go.
We have been.
We have been.
Yeah, we have been. Sarah, you had another element to your question, which was a possible, through the bookcase, yeah, like one or two nights?
Like one or two nights? And that been examined and does that lessen everybody's anxiousness on liability? And does that put less onerous on the staffing?
I think that's something we can look into.
We did explore that as a subcommittee, keeping, I felt strongly that we should try to keep either a campfire element, some kind of an element that's, that's not just a day program where the kids feel like they can bond around a campfire or whatever. And we did recently discuss the option of one night. Pam, do you want to just, just fill in on that?
Um, I think anytime we're involving nights, we're going to start running into the same issues of having staff having to stay over. And you're going to run into your same inclusion and accessibility issues. That being said, I think the campfire element is a charge for the task force. I don't think we can make those decisions here.
Right.
But it's a charge for the task force, is do you enlist, you know, Chris and the Y to put a campfire evening together for you at the lake, either here or in Raleigh? Or is there another organization that will let you go? Does Project, I don't even know. Does Project Adventure do a do all-day activity and then a barbecue at night with a campfire?
Right.
I think all that stuff is on the table. I think the elimination of the overnight component is what's going to reduce liability and ensure that we can get proper staffing during the day.
So we assume, just to make clear for the record, we assume all liability at Maravista because I got an email from a parent who had a friend who was a nurse last year and she was under the impression that they were absorbing the liability for the trip.
I think if they have a malfunction, I mean, I'm going to speak...
Who's that?
Maravista.
Okay.
So I think there's some confusion around that, so...
When I talk about liability, I'm talking about personal liability as a teacher responsible for a student. Responsible for the student's care if a student is lost, if a student is injured. If a student's injured due to the malfunction of some equipment at Maravista, they would own it. If we lose a student in the woods, just a bad example, but we're going to be responsible for it because we're providing supervision. So it's more the liability of supervision than I think is increasing concern. And you can imagine, as kids are spending overnights together, there's going to be a level of supervision that can be provided and can't be provided. So at some point, you start to run the risk of kids acting out, getting into trouble, not having the level of care that they need immediately available. As they get older, those concerns increase. You have a question right there?
I'm Donna Smith, I'm the school nurse over at Essex Elementary. I've been there for a million, million years, I've gone to there for a few years. I've missed a few years. I've also gone to Washington DC a couple of times. I just have to say that the needs of our students, we have so many students with extenuating needs and concerns, grows exponentially every year. The medication list that we have for our students grows every year. When you have a nurse going that doesn't really know the kids very well, it becomes really, really tricky. And even when you have a nurse that knows the kids very well, it becomes really, really tricky to take care of the kids. Last year, we went through three nurses. We had a nurse booked a year ago, the last minute she backed out. We had another nurse booked, a week before the trip, she backed out. And then thankfully, the nursing gods came and found a nurse for us that went with the kids. But it was a tough go for a little while, it was really scary. The, the work that the teachers put in to go on this trip is unbelievable. And I don't, I don't like it when I hear that we don't have enough faculty because I'm telling you, our teachers would do everything in their power to make this trip continue. But they're looking at a lot of liability and a lot of issues. And I just can't tell you, like, I can see coming up this year, lots of kids that need a lot of special accommodations in order to make the trip successful. We want to make sure that when we go on these trips, we have everybody included. And some of the stories that I can tell you, these teachers have gone above and beyond to make it work for every student, no matter what their limits are or what their accommodations need to be. But it's getting more and more difficult every year. And I do want to go back to the eighth grade trip. Having gone on the eighth grade trip, sometimes you think they're a little bit older and a little bit more independent. It's a lot even, it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. It's just a lot of work for the nurse. There's a lot of confidential pieces to it, there's a lot of accommodations for those kids as well. So as much as I love the trip and I think it's a wonderful trip for the kids, I have to say that I think the issues and the concerns and, and the extreme accommodations that we're finding coming every, every day are making it more and more impossible. So, and I, I know that the kids in this year's fifth grade class, some of them have been anticipating, but I think the parents have caught on that there's been a lot of discussion around it and it may not happen. So I would be surprised if everybody was shocked if it was not going to happen. That would be surprising because I think everybody has an idea it was going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Deb?
Hi, I'm sorry I interrupted you before.
That's okay. We need your name and where you live. I know where you live.
Yeah, I'm Deborah Wood and I have three kids in the school and was not familiar with the process, but I just wanted to, I understand how you want this trip to go on another year, as do I. And I have a rising fifth grader, so I want him to have the same experience I have already sent two through. I also, for the fifth grade trip, I did have the pleasure of being the camp nurse this past year. And I think it's a, an experience you can't replicate in a week of activities. And I asked my son Hayden, do you want to do activities, go, go bowling or go to an amusement park? Or would you rather go away to camp? And he said, I could go bowling anytime, I'd rather go away to this camp. In terms of the liability, I think you have liability wherever you go, whether you're in Raleigh at the Girl Scout camp or at Camp Maravista or in Washington. And I know Camp Maravista, their staff was very dedicated to this and they said they would staff it. And that would free up our staff. And then if we had kids who had needs, there would be extra, maybe some extra staff that could then go if you're having the camp staff it. For liability, if liability means money, more insurance, I think parents are willing to spend a little more in order to have this experience. So, and it feels like, have you already made a final decision? I feel like you're saying it's a done deal and we don't have, we can't work to find solutions. I think, I think as parents who do want this experience, and, and also Ally, as you spoke to the piece on anxiety, when kids have anxiety, they have anxiety no matter where they are. So a short trip can bring as much anxiety as a trip away overnight. But I think to see what these kids experienced and their, you, I just, you cannot, it was so genuine, so organic. And the, the bonds that they made and the self-empowerment, everything that they accomplished, I don't think you can do this in a week of activities. And yes, it, it was work, it was effort, it's not easy, but it was worth it. And I, I just, I, I want to keep it going.
Do we have anyone else? Miriam, I'm going to get to people who might not have already spoken. You're back, I can't see who it is.
I'm Julie Crocker, Manchester. I have a daughter who went, did go to Maravista, now seventh grader. I spoke to her about this and she said, well, Mom, you have to go to that because Nolan, Nolan has to go. I, I am a big proponent of the overnight experience. I, I am a big proponent of the overnight experience. I know, I, I've, as a camp counselor at other camps, the speaking about the Maravista, perhaps taking on the staffing of it, I don't know if that was something that was looked into or if there are other camps, perhaps a little bit more local, I'm sure there are some in Massachusetts that also had a, have a program where you could, where we could send the fifth graders to the camp with just some of the extra one-on-one staffing needs. I think this is something that really should be looked into. I think an overnight experience for these kids is, is an invaluable bonding experience. My daughter has spoken to the fact that, you know, their class is very close and she met all, all the friends that she met at Maravista she's still really good friends with. I think it is a really great way, especially since I do like what you were talking about, having the, the different bonding experiences as they go through the time, but she didn't have that. And then she had Maravista and they're, they, she has a lot of friends from Essex that she met at Maravista and continued. So I'm really here tonight to represent her and my upcoming kids. And if they could, if you could continue it, I think there are many who would help try to figure out and help problem solve a new experience, but I do think an overnight experience is important.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Lewis, Manchester. I'm in support of this trip. I, we're only a year into this town, so I don't have a history behind it, but I am in support of it. And I think the big question I would like to pose to you is, to me, this was really rushed. I walked in here tonight and had no idea that it was done. So I would ask that you would at least do this year and then at this point right now, say we're, we're done, if that's what you really feel strongly about. I'm looking at standing as a coordinator for this and I'm thinking, okay, now I'm going to start from scratch. And that's, you know, really interesting to think about the fundraising and the location and all the effort to go and finding a new experience. I mean, I'd love to have like a whole summer and half of the year to kind of come up with that and build it for the next group, but it feels, you know, really overwhelming to think that you just get rid of it and go start over right now at this point in the year, knowing all the money that we're going to have to fundraise no matter what. So that would be my, you know, proposal to you guys to consider that instead. Thank you.
Before we do go further, I just want to clarify that this is not a school committee decision. We are, we have discussed it as a task force. We have discussed it just prior to opening this up, but I want to make sure that we understand how and why this decision's being made, so.
Any more information?
Yes.
And I think the question, it's an interesting question about sending the kids to Marav- to Maravista and having them staff it. I think that, that would be not a school trip at that point. So it would have to pass through a different mechanism and have to be voluntary on the part of the parent because you would be sending your child off to another group. To see where this ends up becoming very technical and very, very much a higher level of responsibility is because it's viewed legally as a component of the curriculum. And as a component of the curriculum, we have to have every, every component of the day available here, available to the students at these sites to be able to access the activities in the curriculum that's being taught, which means every student is entitled by law to attend the trip to whatever extent necessary to provide support. So it's not as simple as just saying, we're going to offer a camp experience and you can sign up and go. If we're saying it's something that the entire fifth grade does, we're then responsible for making it happen for you. So that's a little bit of where the overnight component and the services that may need to be provided in the overnight, supervision that may need to be provided in the overnight, personal liability for, for providing that supervision is at the same level it would be as if you were in the classroom during the day. And I think that's where it, it starts to become, to Donna's point in terms of some of the makeup of our student body almost beyond our ability and beyond the scope of our responsibility to provide this service.
So you're saying it would essentially be doing something at Maravista is like.
It'd be like EF.
It's like taking the two, yeah, taking two classes, two schools, two groups. It's not part of the curriculum, but I hope you're hearing an entire substitute group of teachers. Essentially.
Or we don't for an over eight week break and people can volunteer to participate and go. So like when we do a high school trip, the school isn't really coordinating the trip. There's a group that presents interest. They get, they enlist a teacher to be a chaperone perhaps, but they contract with an outside company. So if that teacher gets sick at the last minute and doesn't go, EF is going to have to still make that trip happen because you're paying a company to go and sponsor a trip. So we're not running those trips, so to speak. We're working through a third party. That's why if you look at, this is really wonky, if you look at all the policies, there's different policies for different types of trips. This is falling strictly under a school day extended.
Okay, so if this is a school day extended program or whatever you want to call it, it's part of the curriculum if the teachers go. If the teachers do not go and are not, you're not trying to replicate part of the school day.
It wouldn't be during the school day.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be part of the curriculum and therefore.
It'd be either during a school vacation or at the end of the day.
Okay. So this opens up a whole.
It's a whole other.
Yeah.
Scenario.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, Kevin Mulaney, Two Ocean Street. I actually grew up in town. I'm 42 years old. I've been on the trip myself. So I can't how many years that is, I guess, but I, I think we're undervaluing the amount that these kids learn outside of the classroom, which I think is super important. As, as parents, you know, obviously things have evolved, medications have evolved, different things have evolved over time. We're missing a lot of that in our school curriculum, in my opinion. So how to balance a checkbook and do some of these simple things, rowing a canoe and going off a rope swing and things like that, to me are just as important. But I have some, some sort of serious questions here. So how much outreach has been done to the community so far in this? Because as a person, I feel like I was pretty involved in the community. I didn't know much about this until tonight. And yes, I have kids in the school system concerned about, but I'm also concerned for a lot of my fellow taxpayers here that have kids who are younger than the fifth grade age, are going towards the eighth grade. So just like, I guess that's my first point is what, what sort of outreach was done to the community? Some of our medical staff, some of our policemen, others?
So I'll answer some of that. As part of the task force, we had a number of, there were teachers, school committee members, administrators, and we had a couple of parent representatives that were involved in it. And throughout that process, one of the things we were all charged with is asking, we didn't do, you know, the post on Facebook, what do you think about Maravista? We did say, hey, go out and look at. And we heard a lot of testimonials from how things affected. We heard a lot of, we heard a lot of people, you know, whether it's positive or in some cases negative, people were reluctant to come forward and say, this didn't work out so well for me. So we didn't do it as a very widely publicized thing, but I know we had several people on the committee very actively going out within their networks, looking for feedback on it. And we really, quite frankly, I think it came as a surprise to all of us over the course of the past few weeks, even in the summer. The hope was, we're going to be able to keep this going at least through this year and make this happen. And then it's.
I can also come, sorry. Okay. As a subcommittee member, there was input from the two parents that were on the committee who are also parents. My kids both went on these programs and love them. There was strong feeling from parents that we should do a survey for the public, which I actually agree with, but it was, it was not, the rest of the committee didn't want to do it. So.
It was, there was the request to do a survey and what we were charged with was understanding what the goals of the, of the trips were and are the trips meeting the goals and what are the issues with the intent of laying some groundwork for future if it does come down to, we need to provide options. And we didn't accelerate it to the point where we said, okay, you know, what's it going to take to keep this going for the next 10 years? It was, it was preliminary work, which is why some of this caught us as well off guard.
I mean, one option to go back to the regional conversation, is this something that the, is this, I have some feelings about whether the school's going to be responsible for coordinating the overnight trip for the next 10 years. Is it something that the EYC, the Manchester Parks and Rec can pull together and, and offer if it's important to both communities? Because I think there's a difference between what's important to the community, which we can, which we acknowledge, and what's feasible and under the responsibility of the school. If we're going to be getting into trying to recruit and manage people outside the school system to go and manage the trip, it's not a school trip in the original sense of what I think it was intended to do. So then we're becoming kind of the broker for the field trip as opposed to it being an embedded part of the curriculum. If it's something that perhaps Manchester Parks and Rec and EYC would like to work together to do, that's a way the community can keep it aligned if it's that important.
I think with all due respect, we've said a couple of times, it wasn't part of the curriculum and now we're saying it is part of the curriculum.
No, no, we've said it's part of the curriculum the whole time.
Yeah, I'm a little confused on that.
It is part of the curriculum. If the teachers don't go, then it isn't part of the curriculum, but the teachers have all gone.
Okay. And I just, I want to continue this discussion, but I think, you know, I have limited time. So I would just encourage you guys to open this up to the community a little bit more. I understand that there's certain liabilities that the school takes on, but my understanding is also that each child has a million dollar policy associated with them as far as that's concerned. I would also encourage you guys to look at extending the waiver that we all signed to go to Maravista. I think we do sign a waiver, right? That provides less liability to the school if that's needed. I just think there's other ways to work around this if you open this up to some of the powerful people in the community that have capabilities to help you guys, other than just making a decision based on talking to a select few people.
I think what's really important here, we can talk about the liability, we can talk about the costs. The lift for the teachers is too much. I don't think there is a pool of teachers that we can pull from and say, oh, do you want to go now? I, I think that's kind of where we are. If there were other teachers who wanted to go on this trip, I think we might have heard from them. I think that's.
They have.
It's almost like when we're talking about budget, when we're talking about the budget and trying to sell it to the community, we keep saying the needs of the children have, and all parents, all of us have agreed that the needs of the children have changed and that's why we need this certain type of teacher, why we need more teachers. So you can't really compare, my 90-year-old neighbor saying, Caroline, well, it's different than when you were there, Dee, so it's different when you were there, 42 or however many years ago. And what we said earlier as the nurse, the needs of the children have changed over the years and we have to protect the teachers in that.
In the member towns.
And the liability.
I think just to follow up on what Caroline said, our teachers are not only stretched during the Maravista trip. Over the years, as the demands have grown, our teachers are stretched very thin all year long. I mean, all of us are in our lives and in the daily world, but our teachers in particular, I think, are really bearing the brunt of a lot of more students with more needs, long days, they're putting in a ton of hours and asking the teachers to go away for an overnight trip on top of the other work they do. They're telling us it's too much. So I think we need to respect that.
Listen to them. In the back, we've got somebody with a plaid shirt on. Oh, John, sorry, I can't see you over the bookcase.
I know. I'm behind.
Sorry, quoting ahead.
John Garth, Walker Road. So I guess my comment is just sort of to mimic Mr. Mulaney's comments there, that the process seems to have not included me. Just to be very blunt. I just feel like it's the first time I've heard of it. And you know, I've got a, a son who's fifth grade, so we were looking forward to it. And apparently, the whole time we were looking forward to it, everybody was complaining about how hard it was, but I didn't hear any of that. You know, apparently it was very tough and I sort of, I mean, I believe that, but it, I don't know that it ever tried to change to accommodate those complaints or challenges of the teachers, it seems from my spot, which, I mean, it's just necessarily from outside looking in because I haven't heard from it, you know, at all until tonight. But that, you know, they just finally said, we won't do it. So that doesn't, that doesn't sound like a long conversation. That sounds like, you're going to do it, you're going to do it, no, we won't, no, we're going to stop.
Nobody has said they will not do it. What I'm saying is that we have some staffing changes this year that right out of the gate, we know we don't have enough males or enough teachers to cover at least one of the schools, which means we're going to have to start pulling people from other areas in the school to try and get them to go. We don't have a lot of male teachers at the elementary, so we'll have to start to be looking to put out, try to pull people in from outside. So we're going outside the bounds of the school to do this. And with respect to everyone, at some point, I have to make a recommendation that will not be popular. I understand that there's a lot of community buy-in to this, but at the same time, if I cannot reliably staff and run the program and feel that we're asking reasonable things from our staff, I cannot continue to recommend we proceed with this trip. And that's where we're at right now, which is, we would love to do a survey, we would love to have a large community conversation, but pretty clear that the community would like us, at least a strong number would like us to continue. I'm simply saying, I do not think we can.
And John, to your point on this happening quickly, this is about the first time that we've all heard about this too. In good faith, the idea was to have the conversation throughout this entire year. I don't know if you were here when I said this, with the intent on making a decision on Maravista 2021, not 2020. The conversation was to continue throughout this year. Unfortunately, the deposit has to be put down now for this year and all of these staffing changes have happened and there are, there have been a lot of written communications to Pam from the staff about their position this year. So I think.
Which is new from last year?
It's been bubbling up, but I think it's come to the point of this year, in addition to some of the staffing changes, that it just is, it can't happen.
I was going to say, the accommodations that people are speaking of, I had not realized it myself until talking one-on-one, hearing the stories of the staff. And for every kind of inspirational story that a staff member had about, look at these, I can name you a dozen students. We had one of those when I was on my second night without sleep and I was taking somebody to the bathroom or cleaning up something or comforting somebody in bed. And I think, oh my gosh, what if this ever were to come out as Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so was at the bed at night with me or, you know, whatever. They said, I get the liability, but they said, personal liability, me, my reputation, where I am, this just feels way too close to the edge and I'll come to one. And I couldn't help but relate to that when I heard those stories and it wasn't one or two. It was, and the lift has been going on from what I saw with those pulling teachers from other grades, let's do things. There have been accommodations.
I don't know what a lift is, but you have a lot.
The, the effort in order to be able to get people, I was going to say.
What you're asking the teachers to do.
What we're asking, and the teachers have, it's shifted around among, oh, you've done this for this many years, okay, it's my turn to go, let's pull in people from other grade, the police and the fire, those have been great things. These are all wonderful aspects that have come out of working with the community. And one of the things that I said as the task force, it's going to be unpopular. I get, we get to blame Pam for kind of bringing it to a head on this, but what I really think we're at, the point is sooner or later, if not this year, if it does continue, we're pretty quickly as a community going to have to get, how do we take this disappointment, this upset and focus on where can we take this and make it better? And the goals that the task force identified, there are a number of them, the fifth grade integration, that could be done way better. There are those individual growth pieces that we see overnight that could be done way better if you don't have exhausted staff and some strangers that are along trying to do this over a very long four-day week. So I'm, forgive me because I, I tend to get out in front and I'm probably beyond where I've been hearing this and thinking this for six months, but I, we can continue it. I'm sure there, I shouldn't say, I'm sure there are ways. Even if we did stretch this this year, it would be a much more intense conversation with the same issues that still be present six months from now.
Thank you, John.
I'd just like to speak. My name's Teresa Whitman from Essex and I served on the task force. I was the Essex representative. And I think it might be helpful if I take a moment to explain how that came about because people are concerned about not having that. Erica Spencer was the representative from Manchester and, and I was the rep from Essex. We were invited to serve on this task force at the outreach from, I believe from Superintendent Boden originally, for a parent representative from each town who currently served on the school council. If you don't know what the school council is, it meets once a month. It's required by law for each school. I don't think just the elementarys, I think each school. And you need to have an equal number of parent and teacher and administration representatives. I believe that's right. I could be slightly off. But we're always trying to fill those positions. I served on school council for three years running and sat through endless school improvement plan humdrum to get to the point where if something useful needed to happen, I wanted to be part of it. And so that's when this came up. And so I was glad to be able to do that. So one thing I'd like to put out there is please be involved with your school council. I had no idea, I have a current fifth grader. She's my oldest. A lot of the fifth grade families that are in our cohort in Essex and of my daughter's friends and friends that we know are younger siblings of people who have already done this. So they're feeling this because you've, you've got last kids or middle kids that are not maybe going to have this experience. I, as a parent, want my child to have this experience, this, this tradition. And at the same time, I sat down, we started meeting in January, this was a long process, and I sat down with no idea of some of the challenges that go along with this. I don't personally think they're not able to be overcome. I'm not personally happy with the timeline of how this is happening. I think you would all agree that this is not an ideal timeline. My hope at this point is that the administration takes from this, from a parent perspective, that I think it's unreasonable to be waiting until things hit breaking point to address them. That things like school council could be really useful for discussing things like, wow, we have late bus issues coming up in the next year or two. Let's talk about that at school council before it gets handed as a, we have to make a hard and fast decision. Same thing with health curriculum, same thing with overnight trips. So I would really encourage parents to be involved in school council. And if you're not sure what that means, it means you meet once a month for maybe 45 minutes tops. Because then when things like this come up, you're invited to be at the table already. It was never, I didn't feel like we were given the task of going and spreading the word and stuff. My discussions with people came kind of word of mouth and just whoever was in the vicinity. But I fielded questions all summer and all fall. And I brought this to, to Pam last Friday by email because I hadn't heard a thing. And I, like all of you, was very concerned about fundraising and everything else. So my takeaway from this was that it became clear pretty early on that as a long-term thing, this was not going to be sustainable, that, that things had to be looked at. I'm personally disappointed in the timeline. the timeline. I think that we need to be looking at things much more proactively so that we could have, you know, hey, the third grade class right now, we need to start looking at options for them, because in two years, this isn't gonna be able to be possible anymore. And I think that's reasonable for parents to feel that pinch and that upset from that. But at the same time, I have some concerns moving forward. We're going to put something together. We, we sat down and the first thing we had to do was identify, what were the objectives of this trip? Nobody knew. We didn't have stated, there wasn't stated, you know, this is in the curriculum, this is why we do this. We came up with all of that on the task force. So my concern is, we want to keep all the, was it something I said?
Yeah.
We want to keep all the best parts of this. We wanna keep all the best parts of this. That's agreeable, even if it's not sustainable to keep this as an overnight trip, which breaks my heart, but I also get it. We don't even know what the best parts are until we've had outreach and input from all the parents. And that's something that I repeatedly advocated for and requested, that there be outreach to parents so that they could have a say in, "Here's how tangibly my child benefited from this program," so that we then know what parts to keep. I don't wanna raise money all year. I'm pretty active in fundraising stuff at EES. I don't wanna raise money all year to send my kid to Six Flags. I can do that on my own. Like, there were some ideas that came up. So one concern I have moving forward is, who has the responsibility for the decisions on this? And will there be structured guidelines regarding, here's what the actual objectives are, here's why they're those objectives, and how do we move forward with it, before we start asking parents to just fundraise for something? And in closing, I enjoyed serving on this task force. It was really eye-opening in an awful lot of ways. If invited to continue, then I certainly would. And I invite you all to please take a seat at the table in your school council. I think we have three open seats in Essex right now. So-
Thank you, Teresa. And your point is well-taken about the structure moving forward, because I think, to Amanda's point, it is very important to know what you're fundraising for. Well, first of all, what the objectives are, how we're going to fill that, and what we're gonna fundraise for. So. You've already gone, Miriam, I'm gonna get you at the end. Annika.
Hi, I'm Annika Taylor from Manchester. I have three kids who've gone or in the system, two of which have gone through all the programs, and one who would be going to Washington. I found out about this issue on Facebook through a friend who is apparently on the task force. That's the first I've heard of the task force tonight. And I'm curious as to why a task force would not have parents who've had the experience of sending kids on these trips, and how it was comprised. Like, who made up the task force? And who, do you see what it-
We had two parents, though, that were on it, that were-
Okay. So who's on the task force? That's one question.
Well, we're both parents.
I think Teresa just illustrated that.
Yeah, so then, and then, so, and then, I didn't hear anything about this all summer. And I understand the liabilities, but how much has that changed from last year? I mean, I don't know. Why is this year so much different? And why wouldn't the staffing problems be addressed earlier than just now for the fifth grade? And if you join Manchester Essex as a fifth grade teacher, you don't have to take the job, if that's part of the thing. You know, it's everyone's choice.
It's voluntary for people to participate in this, and they do it out of their commitment and their goodwill. So it is not contractual, and it is not, we cannot, and I would not compel someone to do this. So we are relying on people volunteering, making arrangements for their own personal families to have babysitters, dog sitters, you know, family members taking care of their kids so that they can travel to New Hampshire. And that's, we're having, as our students are changing, our faculty is changing, and I believe it's coming, becoming more of a burden for them to try to make the time to get up there. The overnight component is a stretch.
And I think Nora is at an obligation to go on the trip, too.
And that's where I think I'm, I feel like I'm talking in double speed. Because if we take a week out of school, and we say the entire fifth grade goes, it's perceived by law to be part of the curriculum. So it may not be a written curriculum, it may not even relate to anything else we do in the curriculum, although I think there may be some stretch connections. But because our fifth grade travels there, and we say this is what we do as a school, that in a way creates an obligation for each student to participate in school that day, and school is being held in New Hampshire. That places back on us all of the obligations we have for making that accessible to students, as we would have here in this building, and through the overnight, which puts us in an extremely different position in terms of caretaking and supervision. Everything from toileting to simple medications.
I agree with all those points, and I would not, I totally understand the stress of having to ride a bus to DC as a teacher, or New Hampshire. It's a huge ask, but-
In terms of the timing, I think you asked about the timing, and why is this different than last year?
Yeah, and then why?
So we have, we have different staff, we have different-
People who've moved grade levels, people are on leave, so we have less people available than we did before to participate, and we do not, we're very light on males if we would have enough meals. Any trip we do with kids, we're gonna, at this age, we have male and female, and, actually, we have male, female, and non-gender specific-
Annika, that's right, that's, I'm sorry.
-accommodations. So we need chaperones in each of those locations, and feeling comfortable in each of those locations.
So it was kind of like Pandora's box. Once it became obvious that, my gosh, we weren't gonna be able to staff it with enough males, then all the dominoes started to fall. And, you know, the rubber's gonna hit the road, and we have to put the deposit down in the next, what, week or so?
Yeah, I, I guess, I, like some other parents, it's not gonna affect me for a couple of years, but maybe there should have been a little bit more transparency or more communication about all this in the community, and about the task force, and who gets to be on it. You know, I've been on school councils, class parents, you know, I've done it all. And this is the first I heard about this.
I'm gonna ask Ken and Rachel to speak to the transparency, because I think the idea of how that task force was manned is the wrong word, but staff, thank you, populated, was woman, whatever.
Sorry.
The intent behind that was to represent different segments. And in order to create, you know, people would be talking-
Upcoming, yeah.
Yeah, people would be talking to their network, so on and so forth. So it's a small enough town, no one was trying to hide anything. I think, as I said, the intent was to have this conversation for a year and a half. The proverbial, whatever you wanna call it, hit the fan in the last, you know, week and a half, when school started, and it became pretty obvious that the pieces were not in place to launch this trip, and to put down a deposit on something that, you know, we might have to be band-aiding at the last minute. And quite honestly, do you want, do we wanna talk about the disappointment now and have enough time to put something else together? Or do we wanna be talking about the disappointment the night before, and band-aiding something together that is not safe or comfortable for anybody going? So unfortunately, the timing does suck. I totally agree.
That makes, that all makes good sense, and I understand. There are other opportunities, like why, there are so many places in Massachusetts to go, but I just feel like it's kind of blindsiding these poor fifth graders or eighth graders. Like, oh, sorry, you don't get to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Annika, we, as a task force, we, I mean, we all came back this year thinking, let's work on this all year long. And literally last week, we got this news about this staffing changes. So I think, Ken, we were all surprised by it.
You were blindsided, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, we had, you know, we have all these documents and a mission statement, and how do we make this work? And we were all trying to make it work, and then we got this news about the staffing changes. And I think that, like Shannon said, it just created this, you know, impossible task of this impossible lift of making this happen, because we don't have the staff.
Yeah, it's like, you two worked hard on it.
Right. So it's a huge disappointment. It's not like we're, you know, just like, that's it. I mean, we're really, this is weighing very heavily on us, so.
We kinda talked about a lot of the same stuff, so I'm gonna take two more questions, if that's okay. Miriam, you'll be the third.
Hi, Sarah Valeo, I live in Manchester. I have three kids in the school system, one in the middle school, and two in the Memorial. Sarah Valeo is my name.
Just, yeah, thank you, I've been hearing it.
Okay. I live in Manchester. I, so what I'm hearing right now is that the decision has been made, and it's a done deal. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Primarily, it has nothing to do, well, I would say, the priority is the staffing, and the financials, the liabilities, obviously the timing, there's been lots of-
I'd say the liabilities are two. Financial, I don't think we're really talking about.
No, I, okay, so, so sorry, the staff and the liability, you would equate those as equal?
No, staffing, liability.
Right, financials.
And it's personal liability, because we do have insurance.
Right, okay. So I get that. So I guess, my, I know there are lots of smart people in this room that are, would be so happy to kind of get down to it and try and problem-solve. But if, if there's no way to even problem-solve the primary issue, which is the staffing, which is what my question is, is are you open to any additional, I mean, we can all complain about the timing, and we're all blindsided, and this, that, and the other, but just trying to, to see if we, there's even open opportunity to try and problem-solve this for this year? That would be my question. And what, in efforts to do that, how would you, I mean, I would say, what would, if you were even open to that, let's say that, okay? The, we would need like a list of what we would actually need to problem-solve for, right? So the one thing that I've heard multiple times from you is that it's the male, the lack of male teachers in the fifth grade. So if there's, if it's more kind of obtuse, and there's more gray, then that's, and you don't wanna elaborate, and you don't wanna, you know, itemize it, then that's something. You say, "We just can't do it, we can't do it, and that's it, end of story."
So for clarity, we can't deliver on the overnight component.
So it's done?
So the problem-solving is on, how do we make, how do we take the objectives that were identified and create an experience that meets those?
So it's, and the reason why it can't be done is because of the staffing?
I feel like we cannot staff the program appropriately this year.
And then, I just wanna be clear, that you are not open to any, any work or problem-solving within that component? Like, if you identify the top three things, are we actually able to work on those two or three issues?
I think if staff-
Because I believe in the past, that there have been outside, like, I know the police, we've had police officers come in the past. So I just, I'm more curious as to if there's even an opportunity to work within this problem, or if it's just kind of, in which case, all of this is null and void.
And speaking with, or reading through, because I wasn't sitting on the task force, the task force outcomes, taking recommendations from the principals, we feel, I feel that they have done all that they can to outreach beyond the bounds of the school, to bring in people in the community to staff the program. That becomes, that becomes an additional lift every year, to try to find people outside to come in. And I think, someone said it earlier, once we start getting more people from outside than inside, and start outsourcing our trip, it's not our trip anymore. And the reason we're outsourcing it is because we're having a hard time reliably staffing it from inside. So in terms of it, this is why I do bring up the community component of it. If there's something the community wants that the school isn't able to provide, is there another community resource that can provide for them? Because the school may not be the best vehicle for providing a camping opportunity, or for overnight travel for young students. And I think that's essentially the crossroads that we've hit, that we can provide team building, we can provide outdoors, gentlemen who left who wanted more outdoor experiences, or outside-the-classroom experiences, we can build all of those things in. What I'm trying to say as clearly as possible is I do not feel that I can continue to staff reliably within our district, nor should we compel people to do it, an overnight trip for the fifth grade.
So that problem-solving has already kind of taken place with the principals attempting to reach out, and-
It's been going on for years.
Yeah, I just wanna-
But I have a-
Wait, can we let Ken?
Real quickly, one thing that was on the task force that was eye-opening to me, and I don't wanna misrepresent, because there were a number of teachers, there were a number of staff on the, on the task force that had been going for many years, and it was disconcerting for me, or not disconcerting, but it was, I was trying to reconcile in my mind, to some of the people that were the most passionate advocates of the trip that had been involved in it for many years, or even a short while, that like, this means everything, the outcomes are wonderful. Were also the people that were like, "I don't know if I can do this another year, because I'm that close to the edge." So for me personally, it really felt like, if your most passionate advocates are the ones that are also saying, "I can't see how I can sustain," the staffing issue is, it almost to me felt like a burnout, that's not the right word for it, but, so it was, how do you get, these are the people that are the biggest advocates to the trip, how do you get them rejuvenated for? And that's what led me to think that needs to be changed.
Can I follow up?
Quickly.
Quickly. So I get that, a hundred percent. Like, I get that. I get it's a huge, I get it's a huge burden on the staff. It's a hu, I understand everybody's, all of that. What I'm asking is that if there is an opportunity to problem-solve for the staffing issue, and what you're saying is no.
No, we're not saying no, we're saying it's already been done.
They've been doing it for years.
The principals have already been trying to do this for years, and now they're at the point where they don't got no-
Yeah, but I mean, like, through the involvement of the community, because from what I, I didn't hear that from the task force, that the task force actually outreach to, you know, people and said, "Would you be willing to do this?" Or, I mean, maybe I haven't heard this, and I don't, maybe I'm completely off-base, but I've been listening really intently for the last-
So, Sarah, before we get down a rabbit hole, we're at the point where we can't staff Merivista.
Okay.
So at this point, I think, moving forward, I think the community involvement is, what are we gonna do instead? I think that is the most value-add piece, and the most important piece, because we wanna retain the pieces of Merivista that have some merit, that people find value in, that people come away with saying, "This changed my life," or, you know, whatever. So I think that's where we need to be going forward. I wanna take one more from somebody who hasn't spoken.
Hi, Christina Yugans, old Essex alumni of, actually, back in the day, Camp Chawamki. I'm one of four that went. And I currently have two children at Memorial, and I am heavily involved in the elementary school right now. I am PTO co-president, and I have been doing the enrichment. Have not heard anything about this until tonight. My point to the staffing, the direct question is, is at what point, over the course of the years, did it become only part of the staffing that was chaperoning? I am of a generation that had parents go and whatnot, so I don't know where we've lost this disconnect of bringing in the community, because I don't know if I personally necessarily agree that it has to be a teacher there giving my child the best experience. For me, I think my children need to be with their peers. They need to be away from mom and dad, and have that experience out with their peers, with another adult. So at what point do we make this change that we can't even open up to teachers, policemen, and firemen?
We have, we've already done that.
Okay. Another direct question, then, that we have not asked, what, when is the deposit due, and what is the deposit?
October.
Abby, do you know?
I believe it's gonna come up-
It's not gonna come up till October.
Yeah, I believe it's coming up soon. I'm gonna bring that up, David, it's right around now. I can hold it up while I'm here, it's right around now.
Is that for the bus, or for the camp?
I think that's for the bus.
I will have the answer just a few moments.
You want a task force question?
So at that point, do we have time to keep that discussion open for the two weeks that we have until October?
And, by the way, I don't typically make those arrangements, they're made at the school level, so I, that's why I don't know.
So it'd be Mr. Willis at this point.
Looking at the costs, I apologize for not having that at my fingertips, I'll see if I can get the information.
So if we're not, if deposits aren't due tomorrow, do we, do we have two weeks that we need to discuss this more with the public?
Yeah, but I think the problem is, we're not gonna have staffing in two weeks, that's not gonna change. I think we have, we could have had this conversation last year, we could have had it the year before, and we could have said, "Okay, let's put it together, let's just band-aid it together, let's get it together for next year." I think we're at the point where we have been doing that. We have been hearing from teachers that, you know, this is-
But we keep on saying just teachers. I feel like we need to take, we all wanna take the burden off the teachers.
So then I would ask that the community take the trip, that the school can no longer-
Then it's not a school trip.
Maintain this trip.
I wanna take Kim.
So, I'm Kim Field, I teach fifth grade in Essex, I live in Manchester. I was on the task force, I've chaperoned the trip, I think, ten times, I think, ten years I've been going. I do wanna say a couple of things. I understand where parents are coming from, and where their disappointment is, and all of that. But I think we need to be realistic, that even if it happened this year, next year's crop of parents would be saying the same thing that you all are saying. So it's always going to be someone that's disappointed, and I understand that, and I feel badly about it. There are a lot of valuable things that come out of this trip, but there's also a lot that chaperones have to do that makes it really challenging to find enough people that are willing to do it. And yes, we have had community people, police officers of common, they've been fantastic. I'm sorry that your kids are gonna be disappointed, but I think, when push comes to shove, you want what's best for your kids. And people that don't know your kids, chaperoning is not what's best for your kids. And I think that Merivista also has a phenomenal summer program. And if you feel that strongly about wanting your kids to have an overnight camp experience, they offer that. Your kid can go for the entire summer and experience the same things. So there's lots of things to do, but you also have to understand that every single teacher that has ever chaperoned has done it because they wanted to be there, not because they were ever forced to be there. When I was hired as a fifth grade teacher, it was not a fifth grade trip, it was an eighth grade trip, that then got pushed down to sixth grade, that then got pushed down to fif- that then got pushed down to sixth grade, that then got pushed down to fifth grade because sixth grade came to the middle school. So, it isn't a historical trip that has been a part of our curriculum per se. So, I just, I just feel like, I don't want people to leave tonight saying it's the teacher's fault that this is not happening, because it isn't.
Didn't want to send that message.
That, that's sort of what it is starting to feel like, so I just felt compelled to-
Thank you.
Share my thoughts.
Miriam, last question.
Uh, Miriam, I've heard Old Essex Road, and I spoke before about the book that my son made, um, because he did have anxiety about going, um, or about going into fifth grade. Um, my question is, for Pam, you had mentioned earlier that, um, that previous, in previous years, it hadn't been curriculum, um, because people at the beginning of the year had requested the trip, but then eventually it just became something where the trip always happened, and that's, so that made it a curriculum decision? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
I'll try one more time, I'm being- A typical field trip comes up for approval every year. So, every year we come in, we would say, "We want to go to Merivista, the end of the fifth grade, all classes are going, we have X number of chaperones, these are the chaperones, we anticipate this many kids, do we have approval for the trip?" Over time, that just, it just became a fait accompli that they were going to go. What makes it part of the curriculum is the fact that we are compelling, the entire fifth grade is expected to participate, because we don't provide instruction on-site during those days that we're gone. So, it's an expectation that the entire fifth grade travel, therefore, it makes the district responsible for providing access to any, every student with their full, um, with their full complement of services that they would receive here in New Hampshire.
Okay, so with that-
Yep.
Um, this class has been coming up for six years, and when they were kindergartners, there were twelve boys and three girls in each class. That should have been a red flag, six years ago, that we're going to need more male people to go on the Merivista trip. And on top of that, I happen to know, because I'm one of the parents, that there is a, and you've all said it tonight, you've danced around it, there are a lot of students in this class who have needs that aren't going to be able to be addressed. Legally, is it, does it make sense to cancel something?
We want to go down that road, we can't go down that road.
Go down it for my kid, my kid's on an IEP, I'm glad to share. My child's on an INPE, and I personally feel like the staffing issues are because of my kid who needs an extra person there, along with any other parent who that might, or might not be an issue for. And I don't think that the rest of the class should suffer and not be able to go, because there are staffing issues that are related to the fact that there are so many more students, or not, with challenges, that they would need help.
Appreciate your comment, we can't comment on it.
Caroline has kind of whispered something that is probably more indicative of what we're trying to communicate than is being communicated, to take Kim's point about how it's starting to feel if you're sitting in the audience. We are in a different time period now than we were fifteen, twenty years ago. And there's a whole lot-
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago, there's a whole lap that goes with it for, for working professionals, which are our teachers, in terms of things that they have in their lives, that they're responsible for, that may not make it as easy for them to participate, although they may want to in the trip. So, let me make very clear that it's not a willingness not to want to participate, but I think people have real-life circumstances that are preventing them from being able to participate. They have families of their own, they have commitments of their own, they have parents and caretaking responsibilities. So, I, I'm getting concerned that everybody's looking to blame somebody for this, and that would be me. Because I'm trying to tell you that we are in an unsustainable position with being able to run this trip effectively. We are clear that the, there's aspect of the community that want it to continue, but what we can deliver as a school system is now at odds with what the community would like us to do. So, I'm telling you as the school committee, I cannot continue the trip forward in an overnight capacity and do it in a responsible way. There's no one person to blame, it's not about finding one more man this year to go on the trip. To do that, we upend the entire school building that's left behind, or we go outside of the school building. So, really, what you're asking the school to do at this point is to provide a community experience that's beyond the scope of the work of the school. And in, and in trying to do both things together, we've increased the personal liability, uh, the resource commitment, and the burden on working professionals who already work a full day and then have to leave home for four nights.
I want to say something else too, because this is the only part we're talking about tonight, but the reason we had a task force to begin with was because there were a lot of things that were affecting Merivista. It's not just the staffing, it's, it's the finance, it's the burden on parents doing fundraising. I know all the people here tonight are representing the people who really, really, really love Merivista, but there are also a lot of people who really were going to bet on Merivista, and some people who are like, "I hate Merivista, and I can't stand fifth grade because it's all about the fundraising." So, we just have to remember that it's not just all about staffing, it's about the needs of the teachers and the district, and doing what's best for our students and what we can provide as a district, and that might not be a summer camp experience.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the discussion. Um, what do you need from us? Do you need a vote, or are you just casting a recommendation?
I'm giving a recommendation, if you want to vote in support of it, I think it would be helpful, having a team approach to this, I think is good, because like we said in the beginning, the task force came to be because it does kind of crisscross a lot of different components.
To reiterate, your recommendation was to continue the task force forward.
To continue the task force with, with the charge of, by December, designing a week of activities to meet the objectives of, um, that, for Merivista. And then, the eighth grade, we're going to appoint a separate one. Can we revise that? Because you're saying that, that it's a week of activities, and I don't necessarily know if that's the best solution.
Okay.
So, I would not describe the solution, I would just-
We need to explore, explore the goals, the objectives of, in the fifth grade case, it was unifying the two student bodies.
I mean, our mission, our mission statement is to assess whether the annual fifth grade overnight trip, currently Merivista, is the best option to meet our current programmatic and curriculum goals. So, I think we regroup on that and figure out, is it three days, is it campfire, is it five days?
Over the course of the year.
Over the course of the year, do we do more things throughout the year?
Something at the end of your sixth grade?
Right. And-
So, do you want us to take a vote on two of those? The trip and then kicking off the task force again?
That needs to be another discussion.
I think your recommendation was-
Maybe go to accept the recommendation of no overnight travel for fifth and eighth grade.
So, move.
Wait, wait, I want to, I want to explore that, because we talked about possible overnight in one of the alternatives. Are we taking that completely off? I mean, is that something?
I can, I- One night? I would say you could leave that open for discussion in the task force.
Okay, okay, so let's not, let's not frame, let's not frame the recommendation with no overnights.
For now. So, the recommendation is, so I move that we, um, continue the work of the task force to develop a solution for fifth and eighth grade curricular experiences by December? I call them culminating experiences, again, the curriculum thing is because we're taking the whole grade level on the road. But it would be great if it actually contributed to the curriculum, there's a plus. So, culminating or- What did I say? Culminating experience.
What do you got?
I have, uh, I have a start and then a, um, continued- I have it on tape.
Okay.
Continued work of task force to develop culminating experiences.
For fifth and eighth grade, okay.
By December.
All right, but before we do that, I think we need to vote on whether or not we're accepting Pam's recommendation. And then, the task force would be the next part of it.
And that recommendation is to not continue Merivista exactly as is in the same template with the overnights.
Or, or DC.
Or DC.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries with Rachel's abstention noted.
So, um, I can't even remember what I said, so, um-
But you can, yeah.
Move to accept the recommendation to continue work of task force to develop culminating experiences for fifth and eighth grade by December.
Is it okay to have a, have a deadline?
Maybe early in December?
Gives you two months for them to get it.
Did anyone want to second that?
The, do we want to have any, because there is a, also, I don't know, now's the time or next time, there's also obviously a desire for involvement and openness around this. Is there, should we say anything at this stage around the format, or how?
Can't the task force come up with that, you guys can come up with it? Like, I think the task force should- No, I think the task force should kind of-
Yeah, come up with that solution.
I'm sorry, I'm badly waving at you, because as a task force representative, eighth grade was not a part of our task force. So, I'm not interested, that you want one task force for both trips, as they're very different.
We're doing two separate, two separate, one separate. But if you fix the whole broader question, thank you, is that what you want to say, Teresa?
Yeah, we have no eighth grade representatives on our task force.
Yeah, 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 no, it's two separate task forces with the whole, under the whole umbrella.
I think using the policies of the committee, we can, or the standing members, school committee members, not the creative task force, recommission the group. I think we worked through school councils last time, jury of people, that makes sense, because those, back to those groups are in tune with the decision-making at the school. But if you want to go wider, and you can kind of cast a, an all-call, pull in some people, you just need to, we just need to develop a mechanism for it, we have fifty people, how do you manage that?
Okay, do we want to vote on that?
Task forces, do task forces-
Task forces, okay.
Task forces. Can we do that? Yeah, task forces. So, I made the motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Can you repeat the, can you repeat the motion?
Will we move on it?
Move to accept, uh, continue, move to continue work on task forces to develop culminating experiences for fifth and eighth grade by December of 2019.
Okay, so we have a motion.
December is, because, it's so unclear.
I guess it's enough time to get organized beyond. Like, if we have a decision in December, if there's any fundraising, if there's any planning, if there's recruiting of people to participate, we have enough runtime.
So, that's the task force to make a task force to, to-
To make-
To plan the fifth grade experience.
You might want to amend it and have a report due in December to see where people are, but I think keeping a tighter timeline might just going to push it.
But it's the task force to make a new task force to solve-
No, it's to recommission the task force and have a few meetings in order to make a proposal as to what the activity could be.
The replacement, the task force-
So, it is, it is coming up with a replacement.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because when we met as a task force, Teresa, I mean, and Ken, we were going to have a separate task force do that, not this task force. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear.
I guess we must have said earlier, this task force wants to stay together.
I just want to make, I just wanted to clarify that, because that's something that we talked about in our-
Yes, so you guys have created the mission, you've already identified.
We kind of did that lifting, and then it was like-
So, moving forward, this task force, if those still serve, those serving on it in the past are amenable to continue to serve on it, that's what the charge will be.
Got it.
Got it?
Just one other point of clarity, because when you said something, Karen, when we, this is, you know, we can say there are fifth and eighth grade activities that go on, that kind of have built up to, like the school play or the talent show. Those are outside the scope, those continue as is, under whatever guidance or direction the principals and the PTO and school council have. So.
Okay, so, we've already had that motion made, we've had it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Can I, can I, just one more, the communication, just so that the right communication gets out versus the telephone communication? I'm going to draft something, I have a meeting with principals on Thursday, and I can assume that something will go out probably as part of newsletters or as a direct communication to private principals. Can I do make a request that it's not in a newsletter?
Yep.
I just think that those get lost.
Yep.
I think address this.
A direct.
Yeah, this on its own.
So, are we solving the eighth grade ta, trip by Decem, I'm, I'm still, like-
Yes, so what I'll do is, I will-
Separate task force.
Organize a task force with the eighth grade team, parents, my guess is it will run through our school council.
Right.
Because they're at the ready, they have regular meetings set up to kind of process through what those look at for the eighth grade.
Okay.
And, and just also, I was going to say a point of clarity for, because I appreciate everybody's spending the time and coming out tonight, and the people that have taken part in the task force and all, and obviously, we're not resolved, other than what we've done tonight, we're not resolved on it, for ongoing communications on this, because all of you, I assume, will go out and communicate, as you should, that it's going to be different this year. Is, should any focal questions or ongoing stuff, what's the, not to put the principals on the spot, but as things go on, and hey, I haven't heard about it for a week or a month, or where are things at, or I'd like to get involved, should that be directed to the principals for the fifth and the eighth grade? Or, what's the mechanism?
Yeah, yeah. If you have interest in participating, giving suggestions, sitting on a committee, attending a meeting, please reach out to either John Willis or Jennifer Roberts at the elementary, or Joanne Mano at the eighth grade. They are going to be running point, I am here to kind of be the coordinator of all of them, um, but they'll be running point for redesign at their level. At the elementary, the trick is that we have to have a cross-district team, so they'll have to be working together.
I just have one thing I have to say, having been on the school committee-
Kim, you've had one thing to say.
Let's see, you see, actually, this is, this is the biggest audience by a factor of about four or five that I've had in four, four years in the school committee, and I really appreciate this, and what I really hope is that all of you, I know all of you are advocates for your children, for the schools, that we can, it's not, this is not where I wanted to be, or where I hoped we would be when we started up the task force, but that we can get this to a better place, and also to continue to get the advocacy for all the other parents who aren't here, on how do we keep the schools such a critical part of what it means to live in Manchester, live in Essex, and have kids here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, thank you. So, thank all of you for coming, I know this is a disappointment, I know the kids are going to be disappointed. And, in a nutshell, it really sucks to have to make these kinds of decisions, but I think you guys all understand where we are, and where we're coming from. We're going to shut it off.
I know it's a request, so, about the email-
Yeah.
That you send out when you're telling the community, because this is a small percentage of people who are going to be shocked and they're going to involve. Could you just leave who parents are to contact in the email? So, you explain what's happening, what's not happening, and this is if you want to help out, this is who you should contact.
That's going to go through the principals.
Yeah, okay.
It will, it will look-
Not just us who's here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Word of mouth.
Yes. Great success, thank you.
All right. So, thank you all.
Come listen to our budget soon.
Starts in December, it's the first one. Don't worry. Thank you, Governor, good to see you.
We are back in session. And we're on. All right, so let's discuss our goals, we have revised goals from last time. You ready?
We're ready.
Is that something you'd like to share with the whole class, Caroline?
I was just saying to her, oh, yeah, so you have Pam, she wants to share with those.
I'm kidding. With regard to the goals, the only thing, um, I think we just have a typo on the first goal, Proposition Two and a Half, and Advocate Four, and Cre, I think it's just plain old advocate.
And also, I think that we're missing that extra comma. That is so necessary.
Are you kidding, what, after the and?
After the and. Comma.
Comma and, yep.
And advocate.
Oh, I missed that one.
That comma has gone by the roadside.
No, it hasn't.
No.
No, it hasn't.
I believe in it.
We have a majority who believe in that.
Yep, I do too.
Yeah, this is a democracy, really.
It's an extra comma democracy, all right, so-
Well, I hope no one sees this, because, you know, I will tell you, that informs people exactly how old you are, if you are still using that comma.
Okay, moving on.
All right, I'm just saying. And also, on, on bullet two, can we put three as opposed to the number three?
Oh, yes, you've got to spell it out, T H R U, anything under twelve, you spell out. Skill's fault. Um, all right, does anybody have any comments on any of the other?
I wouldn't either, I'm with you. I've got it.
It's, uh, Chicago.
Okay. All right, um, do we need to move to, do we need to vote to approve these? Well, I want to wait till Kim comes back.
Come on back. He's worn out. He's out there talking to people. Move to approve the draft, or the school committee goals for fiscal year twenty, as, as edited.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstain?
Okay.
All right.
I know you want to go home, but-
Oh, wait, did we, um- Oh, wait, did we, I thought we missed something, no, we didn't.
No.
Okay, can we just approve the goals?
Okay.
With some edits.
Did we add, did we include?
They were like commas.
No, we did not. Okay, school committee comment.
I just, sorry.
I just want to, since Rachel's here, we had talked last time about the meeting time.
Oh, yes.
I do not want to take a vote without her.
Right.
Thank you, I read that in a minute. Yeah.
So, now that we're here, do we want, are we going to meet at 6:30 moving forward? I think that was a compromise.
I think meet at 6:30 and do our business from 6:30 to 7:00, and put public comment always at 7:00 o'clock so that people feel like they can get here at 7:00.
That was a really good idea.
But that was a good compromise.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be part of the decision, but, and we can hold 6:00 to 6:30, seeing as we're used to meeting at 6:00 for executive sessions, whenever it pops up.
Okay, all right, all in favor of moving the start time to 6:30?
Do we have to vote on it?
I don't know, do we?
As well.
I think you have, I don't know if the start time is in the policy, but your meeting time's, yes.
Let's, let's cover it, yeah, let's just make sure.
I move start time goes to 6:30, public comment time moving forward to 7:00.
Starting at our next meeting?
Starting at our next meeting on.
In two weeks.
I don't have the data.
Second?
Are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. See you all at 6:30 next year, next week.
We have school improvement plans that night.
Sorry, what?
We have school improvement plans on the first, middle and high school. So we might, you know, we might deal with a little bit of the eighth grade trip that night, but Joanne will be here, and then the 15th would be the next opportunity if parents still feel like they need to weigh in. Both Jen and John will be here that night.
So I have two questions.
About, one is about No Adam. There was a 10K chart, and I thought we were abandoning No Adam.
I think the issue is that we kept No Adam in the elementary schools, right? And then we did the.
Stem scopes.
Stem scopes from the middle school up.
Okay, I had the same question.
Yeah, because it was a big, it was a big expenditure, and I just wanted to, 1:30 on that. It was only for Essex Elementary, so it was Memorial, does Memorial have the same?
The orders just get put in by the principals when they do their purchasing, because it hits each of their respective budgets.
That's resource.
And so in the past, you would have, what?
It's resource having, I mean, it's got a lot of.
Yeah, and so each budget has been allocated a cost that takes into account the number of students or which considerable numbers are, and that's been absorbed by the budget since we adopted the program. It's part of our new adoption process to make sure that each school has the funds.
They're considerable.
Yeah. I know, it's just. On that, on that note, was there discussion of extending STEM scopes down to the lower schools at some point? Was that part of her whole presentation?
Julie was going to be looking at it.
Okay.
It was STEM scopes went in in the year that No Adam had done some reconfiguration of programming, so it was a little bumpy. Whenever you redo something, people have to use something new. So I think there may have been some chatter about wanting a change, but if they've settled in, they may not be ready to change. The program has been great in terms of delivering the curriculum, the outcomes have been very strong, and the test scores are the only measure, but the reason we went with it is because it's very hands-on. So all those things that make it expensive are things that are prepackaged deliverables that are actually hands-on experiments. But Julie's going to be here beginning of November.
Yeah.
So I'll put her on your list.
Okay.
And just one other thing, I just want to say thanks, it was a difficult meeting, and also Shannon did a really good job of kind of managing that, so.
Thank you.
It was an uncomfortable thing to have to talk about, and I think, you know, change is hard, but I think you can develop better programming that really does not have such a.
It is so complicated.
Yeah.
I think, I think Mira Vista in so many ways is great, but I think as, you know, we get 25 years away from the genesis of it, it becomes far more complicated for everybody.
And it has not evolved, it doesn't trigger, it has evolved or changed or altered in any way over time.
Right, so, you know, it, as I said earlier, it's really hard to make those kind of decisions, and it's hard to communicate that, and I, I do understand that people were frustrated with the timing of it.
I agree.
And so were we.
Yep.
But I think that there was some good faith in, in that we were trying to extend the conversation, and we just all got caught blindsided. So I understand that there is a lot of frustration and a lot of disappointment, but I am confident that in what we will replace Mira Vista with, or what the task force will replace Mira Vista with, will be something that people will say, "I'm so glad that happened."
I was, I was late returning because several party task force members were very excited about what the potential is that it leaves up, and, oh, yes, we'll be there if we bring more people.
Excellent. Excellent, okay.
So just one last thing, Gail and I both noticed in the cricket this week that the gavel to gavel does not mention the school committee meetings or the school building committee meetings, but has everything else posted. So, Gail, we were going to get the school building committee dates, and she's got the school committee dates, and get them over to Erica, right?
The website also needs those dates.
The cricket website?
No, our website, because I went on the calendar today to see if we had a meeting on the 29th of October because I scheduled something. And I don't know.
We don't.
No.
The first.
Yeah, but we can just check the dates. Also, just as a housekeeping item, minutes from building committee, I just, I just want to make sure we got all that.
I picked up on that myself this time. I just got them from Rachel.
Yeah, I don't think, they've been putting them up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Caroline, thank you for bringing that up, I noticed that, but it kind of went in one, I grabbed her and out the other, but thank you for picking that up, I noticed that too, and I looked at it. All right, if there's nothing else?